All right. Good evening. Happy New Year, I guess. This must be about the latest that you can still say this. But it's our first town hall of 2021, so I thought I would, I would just say Happy New Year. And hopefully, all of you had some restful holidays and, and you're doing well right now. You're, you're, you're healthy. And, and you're staying strong and, and still looking forward to get back to volleyball as soon as we can. We're all, we're all hoping that. And, and in the meantime, while we get to connect and, and chat a little bit about what's going on and, and what we can do to, to stick connected. So today's gonna be, it should be too long. We just wanted to give you some updates on a few things. On the call today, I have a few of my colleagues that are, that are with me that will help share some information. So we have Karish, Calvin, and Oakland, you see there on your screen. So, so we'll be in, in charge of this tonight. We'll go through the information we have to share. And then at the end, we'll take some questions. If you have them as we go, just please write them in the chat and then we'll come back to them at the end. And then again, if you want to just raise your hand and, and ask a question, you can just unmute yourself and, and, and we'll take questions like that. All right. So let's get started with our little, our point here. And I'm going this. So we kind of have a mishmash of stuff today. We didn't have like one big topic that would take the entire time. So we're actually going to talk about the Coach Academy and walk you through how to post. And then we're going to talk about the OVA Diversity Education Program that was created partly thanks to the Canadian Entire Jumpstart Grant that we recently got. And we'll give you a quick NCCP update at the end. So a little bit of, you know, coaching and also some conversation about some education opportunities that are out there for you right now. So we'll get started with the Coach Academy conversation. And just before I pass it on to Oakland, just wanted to kind of remind everybody of where the Coach Academy is. So this is a platform that we built in the fall, thanks to a grant that we got from the Canadian Red Cross. And we were able to, to create this, this platform for us to start some, sorry, to share some information about return to play. And there was a lot of information, obviously, that we wanted to, to put out there and create some videos and create some resources that clubs and coaches could use to run practice in, you know, with restrictions. And also perhaps run some virtual training with their athletes. And, and so the grant went all the way until the end of November. So we kind of transitioned out of the grant. And as we were starting this new year, we really wanted to give coaches an opportunity to, to get involved and start sharing their own, their own things. Because now more than ever, we believe that we really need to, to stick together. And, and this is, you know, a good opportunity as we may be less busy with on-court stuff to have conversations about how we approach coaching. And, and this platform that we created is a great place for that. So tonight, we want to walk you through how you can start posting stuff. And, and you'll see it's pretty, it's pretty simple. So I will pass on to Oakland. Oakland?
Thanks, LP. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us. I'm just gonna share my screen here and I'm gonna go over. Let me just find it here. Where is it? Right here. I'm gonna go over the process of posting your, any resources or drills or information that you want to share with other coaches. I think, not sure if LP was planning on covering like the first step to become a Coach Academy contributor. That information, that was the slide that LP had on the screen. And I'll let him maybe touch on that a little bit after my call, after I go over the process. But if, after members have gone through that, that first step, which is kind of reaching out to the OVA just to make sure that their video quality is, is up to standards. They'll be given access to be able to upload any resources that they want to the Coach Academy. And to do that, they would have to first log into their account. And this is the screen that they would see. And then they would need to head over here to the editor feature in the top right corner. And this is the section where they'll see all of the resources that they've posted. And they'll see two sections. They'll see the drill sections. And they'll also see the resources section. The resources section actually includes the virtual training sections over here, such as volleyball, sports science, team building, life skills and skills itself. And the drill section is separate over here. So once you have all of your information ready, you have your videos, your documents, or anything that you want to post on the Coach Academy, you'd have to determine whether it's a drill or it's a resource. Resources can be maybe practice plans and then drills, pretty self-explanatory drills on serving, hitting, blocking. So for example, if I were to upload a resource and the, the steps to upload a drill or resource are very, very similar. So in this case, I'll just cover how to upload a resource. So if you want to upload a drill, you'd have to go to the right top corner over here and click Add a Drill. And if you want to upload a resource, you'll have to click the Add a Resource button. And you'll get a similar page if it was a drill. It just say new drill instead of new resource over here at the top. And this is where you enter all of the information for, for the post that you'd like to upload. So the heading would be the title of your post. In this case, I'm just gonna do a test here, LP, with our five-year review for our strategic plan. So for example, the heading would be the Ontario Volleyball Five-Year Review. There, the levels section, there are three levels, beginner, intermediate, or advanced. And if you're not sure which one applies to your content, then we recommend selecting all three. And if you think you, you know, selected one by mistake, you can go ahead and delete that, that the word from, from levels. Tags, tags is probably one of the most important parts of when uploading your, your content to the academy as tags is used to categorize the resources that you're posting. So for example, if you want to post on the volleyball section, then you need to use the proper tag for, for that section and the one for sports science and team building or, or life skills. So for example, and we've created a little chart that is actually posted on our, on our website. And I'm gonna share the link to that in just a second here. And the chart will show you the proper tag that you must use in order to have your content show up to that particular section. So for example, for volleyball, just double check here, for volleyball, the tag would be virtual volleyball. For sports science is sports science, team building is team building. So that, that little chart will also be uploaded to the Coach Academy with a full information on how to go through this process. So for example, for this, I'm just gonna use a tag here. I'm just gonna use life skills for a purpose of showing you guys. And then, once I have that, that tag, if I want, if that's where I want to, if that's where I want my content to show up, I can add any other tags that apply to, to the content. So for example, strategic planning, or you know, if it's something else, then it would be defense, offense, setting, anything that you think applies to, to the post that you're uploading. After that, you move on to the Post As option and you'll just have to click Myself here. So that way, other coaches that are kind of looking through the Coach Academy, they can see who posted the, the content and they can contact you if they, if they have any questions or if they want to find out more information about the resource that, that you're posting online. So this, this part right here is similar for drills and resources. The little more details button over here, this is one of the main differences between the two. Where if you're uploading a resource, you're just gonna get a description option over here. And I'm just gonna add the description here. I'm just gonna copy it over from the YouTube page. And if you were to upload a drill in this section, then you'd also have a few other options to add, such as equipment that is needed for the drill or any other information that, that you need. Once you've entered all of this information on the, on the first tab over here, you'll scroll down to the bottom and just click Save and Next to move over to the next section. And in this section, then you'll be able to switch between videos, photos, links, or files. So if you're uploading a photo, you can switch over to this, this tab. If you're uploading any links or files, you can switch over to this. And if we're uploading a video, then you'll be in the video tab. And the thing with the Coach Academy is that you'll actually need a link to the video to upload it. So you can't upload the file straight to the academy. So I think the easiest way is to maybe create a YouTube account. Or if you're already have a YouTube account, upload your videos to your YouTube and then just copy and paste that link over to the, to the academy. So I'll just copy the OVA Five-Year Review link over here. So once you've copied the link over, just hit Save Video. Okay, so you'll see the, the video show up over here. Now, one thing that we ask of, of our members when they're uploading is that to make sure that, you know, they always try and upload thumbnail photo for any resources or any drills that they upload. So I'm not sure if I had one. I'm gonna use, I'm gonna use the Beginner's Guide video over here for, just to show you guys. So they can click any video and upload that, or sorry, any photo and upload that photo. And that will show up as a, as a thumbnail for the post itself. And you'll see that a little bit later. And then if you, and then you can switch over to the Links and Files section. For example, if you, if you're uploading a drill and you have a file that goes along with a drill that you want to share with the coaches, this is where you can attach those files and add the name red beside it as well. So I'm just gonna do the complete how-to guide over here for posting. Academy. And as you see, if you click another, if you click another file over here, then you'll see another tab kind of show up at the bottom. So you can add as many as, as you need. If you don't need to, if you don't need to upload any files with the post that you're posting, then you can just skip this section and go straight over to, to the Publish tab over here. So I'm just gonna go over to the Publish tab. This is also another kind of very important information. When you're uploading your content to the Coach Academy, you want to make sure that the Publish to Groups box is always checked. That way, the members that are on the academy, they'll get a, they'll get an email and anything that you upload will actually be uploaded to, to this section of, of the website. The Publish It Now question over here, that gives you the option, if you want to publish your, your post in this moment, or if you actually want to schedule it for another time. For example, if you have two or three different posts that you want to upload and you want to get them out of the way, you know, but you don't want to publish all of them right now. If you uncheck this box right here, it'll actually give you the option to choose a different date that you want to publish your post at. So for example, I were to choose tomorrow, was it tomorrow? Then my, I can just click Publish It and my post would actually be uploaded automatically tomorrow. And for now, I'll leave this as, as a publisher. Keep on checking this. I'll leave this as Publish It Now. And once you've entered all of this information, and if you have to go back and switch anything, you can always go back and click Publish It. And you'll actually see your resource show up, which is this one right here that we just uploaded. You'll actually see your, your resource or, and if it were a trill, it'd show up in this section over here. And you will, if you click the, if you click the, the post that you actually uploaded, then you'll be able to switch any information if you have to go back and, and edit anything. And very quick thing over here. Also, if you want to go back and maybe make your, make a post inactive or maybe delete a post, this is also where you'll be able to, you know, access all those features. So if I were to go back to the video that we just uploaded and go back to the Publish It page, if you no longer want that, that post published, you can just uncheck this and click Save and the video will no longer, or the post will no longer be available. I just want to see over here. And once you've uploaded that, I think most of you have already seen this, like this is how it would look on the screen for other coaches. Okay, okay, I'm just gonna stop sharing my screen here. And let me know if I actually missed anything.
That's pretty good. Do you want to make this post inactive now?
Yeah.
Good. I thought you were, I thought you were gonna show how to make it inactive and just like leave it inactive. No, that's good. And I guess I'm, I'm gonna share my screen again and just show you a couple of things that, that Oakland mentioned. So the first one is this one here. So that's the chart that Oakland's talking about. And this will be available in the PDF that we're sharing on the website for, with all the information on how to post. And so this will be your guide for, okay, well, if you want to, your post to get to this Return to Play section, this is a tag that you need to use. If you want it in the Life Skills section, like Oakland did, you're gonna use a tag, Life Skills first. And then you can use any other, any other tag that, that you want. What this does is it really helps people find your, your stuff today. Actually, I'm gonna switch my screen to something else. I cannot find this. I'm gonna go like this. So today, Dave McIntyre, who's currently our host for the OVA Learns Forum. And here, he was talking about a couple of of resources that he wanted to share with people. And so he just posted them and forgot to actually use one of the tags. So his, his, his resources were actually nowhere to be found. And so there's still nowhere to be found. So where to go in any section, you wouldn't be able to find his resources because he didn't use a tag to put them in there. So what you'd have to do is you'd have to go to any of these sections. And then you'd have to click All Tags. And then you could potentially find Dave's resources. So I have let him know and he's supposed to add a tag to it. And I'm sure he'll do that in, you know, you know, very, very shortly. But, but the thing with tags is it would just help people find your stuff. Or else they were kind of, they will just stay kind of in limbo. And unless someone knows to uncheck the tag in one of those sections to all, then they won't be able to find, to find your stuff. So, so that's what's going on with, with the tags. Now to go back to this one here, I guess what I forgot to mention before Oakland spoke is that for your first post, so right now, you may not see the Editor button at the top of your screen, just because you haven't been approved or you haven't been allowed to post. So we, we need to do that on the, on the admin side. We need to kind of go to you in the member section and just click a button to say, okay, well, John is allowed to post now. So we need to activate that function for your account. And so what we want to make sure is that you have a good understanding of what we just explained. Just so that things run smoothly and we don't have posts going like in a bunch of different places where they shouldn't be. So if you want to post something, what we ask is that you, you prepare what you need for your first post and then you contact us. And we'll just touch base with you to make sure that, you know, that you caught the, the information right. And then we'll go, okay, perfect. Thanks for wanting to share and it will activate your, that function in your account. And then you'll be good to go to post whenever you want. But we just want to connect with you, just so that, that we make sure that these, these things are understood. Just because we're getting started and, and we want to keep, you know, a momentum of, of quality content on, on the platform. That's it for that. Let's move on to, to Karish's section. And then we'll take some of the questions and we can come back to this later. So Karish, take it away. Tell us a little bit about the OVA Diversity Education Program.
Okay, awesome. So, oh, there you go. Everyone can see me now. Happy Monday night, everyone. So this year, 2021, I decided my, one of my, one of my resolutions was to become more educated about diversity, equity, inclusion, indigenous issues. And a lot of innovation in volleyball issues, but not technical and tactical, but more about society, culture, and change. So I'm starting education from the beginning, which is why I have all those charts behind me. As you can guess. And today I have four on this chart. Four is there. Four resources that you guys can access from the Diversity Committee or recommended by the Diversity Committee. So the first, I'm gonna drop it, the chat box now. You could head over to our website and see that page and in there you'll see a Jumpstart tab. And that opens up for all of you as coaches to basically take any of a menu of, of courses that are listed there. It's the middle tab under Jumpstart Project. And just to give you a quick background about the project, it's an awareness and an education campaign that we applied, that we designed and applied for, for all our members. You'll see some categories listed as, you know, this amount of staff and this amount of club administrators. But honestly, as all the grants that we get, we have a little bit of saving. So I'm pretty much opening it up to everyone that wants to do it. I have a thousand dollars to spend of training. So all you have to do is send me an email and I'll just type my email in here now. Let me know which one you're doing. I'll say, yeah, go ahead, just so I can track you. You pay, you do the course and we'll send you back your money once you send me your certificate of completion. This is not just open to coaches and club administrators. It's also open to some of your athletes, if you want your athletes to do them as well. Basically, any member of your club or teams or wherever you sit. And if any of you are coaching and you have athletes or staff, coaching staff that want to do it, they can access it as well. So that's the first one. The second one is a pretty big one. This is from the University of Alberta. And they have a training on indigenous issues. Just drop that in the chat there as well. It's free. If you want to get a certificate, certificate after of completion, you have to pay for it. I think it's sixty dollars or seventy dollars. I'm just doing the free one. It's very intensive, but not in an intimidating way. So I was just gonna share this with my coworkers tomorrow because some of them actually did the indigenous issues in sport by Canadians. Jumpstart Project and they showed interest in going wider. The reason why I'm giving this one to you is not just because we're doing due diligence for our indigenous populations, but because both the OVA and Volvo Canada have really made a commitment to opening up indigenous participation for coaches, for athletes. And if you don't have a background in it, or you just want to learn more for a course that's created by indigenous persons for the rest of us, be good one to do while it's free. It's been run for, I think, two semesters already and the feedback's been phenomenal. The third one I have for you is, I'll have to drop this into a file. This one just came across my desk today from Blair or President. And this one has to do with, where did it go? Diversity and Equality Initiatives. This one is targeted specifically to youth sport. It's the first of its kind. It is also free. There, like everything else, there is a paid part of it that I think runs about ninety bucks. And that's basically if you want the slides. But like, I'm just doing the free version. This one is a summit. So it's, it's over two days. You just open the PDF, click on the Learn More button on that tab and sign up for free. I think it's being spearheaded by Redeemer University. And the idea is really to make this an annual summit. So I really hope some of you guys jump in and, and see what it's about. This one is very focused on coaches and club administrators and youth sport. And the reason why is because when we have equality and diversity issues, especially with our athletes, the first ally that athletes usually go to is their coaches. Sometimes they don't even tell their parents and especially if they are a victim or, or they just see something or they want to question something in sport, their coaches are the first person that they go to. So that's number three. And number four is not a resource, not a, something that you could just sit and read anymore. This is to let you know that we have a podcast and videocast coming out at the end of the month. As part of this Jumpstart Project, the awareness part of it. And we are interviewing athletes, coaches, administrators, you name it, from the OVA, only within the OVA for at least this first season to talk about equity, diversity, inclusion issues in our sport. It's really important to us to have, to make sure our members have a voice. One thing I found when we were doing the call out for Diversity Committee members is a lot of people wanted to voice things, not a lot of, but a few people wanted to sit on the actual committee. And that really opened my eyes to the fact that if people want to talk, great. Let's give them a forum to share what they're doing. And we have athletes under the age of eighteen even who are doing their own initiatives out there in, in the public. And something that we want to give them a voice to share why, share their experiences so that you can pass it on to your athletes as a coach, because again, you are usually their first ally. And secondly, to bring in people from outside who have been specialists in this, these areas to, to share what they've learned back to us. We will not only be talking about diversity things, we'll also be talking about some community engagement innovations. I'll give you an example of one that we did a few years back on a visit I had to St. Thomas Express. They were, they turned their volleyball grassroots spikes program into what was really a youth leadership program called the Red Shirt Leaders. That's actually on our YouTube channel. So you can go look for that. But more things like that, we will be discussing. So those are your four things. The Jumpstart Training, University of Alberta Training, this Equity and Inclusion one from Redeemer. And then at the end of the month, look out for a podcast and videocast talking to members like you. That's it for me, guys. I hope you guys have a wonderful night and Happy New Year. If you have any questions, we'll look at it afterwards.
Yeah, for sure, Karish. Thanks. Just, I actually just had one that I want you to clarify. When you said that people could just send their, their receipt and certificates for, you know, for us to pay for their, for their training with a Jumpstart Grant. Does that, I assume that applies to OVA members?
Yes. But if you have someone, for example, who's not a member, let's say you're a university coach. You may be a OVA member because you may coach a youth team. But you have someone on your university coaching staff that may want to participate. And you say, you know what? Yeah. Just send me an email. I'll say, you know what? I have space. I'll let you do it. That's okay. But it is primarily for our members.
Okay, thanks, Karish. Yeah, and we'll come back with, with any questions. Let's just get, get, get it over with with the information that we have to, to, to share. And then we can, we can have you guys talk. So for this next piece, I'll just go back to my shared screen. Voila. So just a quick NCCP update for you guys. And for this one, I have the pleasure to, to welcome Calvin on the call to, to tell us about this.
Calvin. So I'm just gonna talk to everyone about the NCCP program and a couple of updates that we have throughout the organization. So in the fall of last year, we introduced a new coaching eligibility policy that focuses on safe, inclusive, and responsible experiences for our athletes. Going away from the traditional certification model that we were used to seeing. This policy meant that coaches now have to do their certification before being registered and before coaching in the gyms. And in addition to that, it also meant that it applies to our assistant coaches and our technical directors, not just our head coaches anymore, as it was in the past. In the policy, in addition to the making headway, the foundations of volleyball and the make ethical decisions, we also added a new Safe Sport Module that is mandatory for all coaches. And that discusses athlete malt treatment and abuse in sport to help better protect our athletes. and that discusses um, athlete malt treatment and abuse in sport, and all better reject our athletes. I'll be getting to the next one, yeah, so the second slide, um, in this new policy, uh, head coaches and technical, technical directors were asked to do all four of the modules. Um, and as you can see from the numbers, uh, we had a seventy-three percent compliance rate. Uh, the assistant coaches were only asked to do the free modules, and that's uh, the Safe Sport Module and the Making Headway in Sport Module, and we had a sixty-five percent compliance rate, so that's uh, a little bit better than what it has been in the past. Um, overall, there's a sixty-eight percent compliance rate, but of course, we want a hundred percent compliance rate. Um, for those coaches that haven't done the modules, we followed up with them and their club presidents via email. Uh, just to make sure that, that they don't need, that they need any help with the process, and to make sure that everyone's on the same page. Um, while we have some downtime, a bit more free time than we're used to, uh, we recommend everyone to do these modules before we get back in the gyms, um, because we're gonna hit the ground running, hopefully in a few months, uh, and you can all do all these from your home.
Yeah, and thanks, Calvin, and I just wanna add that, of course, you know, this is a new policy from this year, so we expected uh, some, um, some people not to know about it, or people that maybe not understand it. So we're not surprised that um, we're not, you know, closer to, to a hundred percent, and especially also because uh, right now we're not participating in any events, so perhaps some people don't, uh, don't see the point of uh, of meeting these requirements right now, but it's really important that um, that we get the, that we spread the word and that we get used to this new policy, because um, you know, once we do get back into the gym, uh, we will start um, applying this policy and, 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 and actually implementing it. And so coaches who do not have um, their mandatory more modules just won't be allowed to register for an event. Um, so, so we wanna kind of bring some awareness around that now, while, like Calvin said, there is time for people to complete uh, their modules, so uh, y- y- you know, for yourself, if you think that you may be missing some stuff, or if you're club president and, and, and you think or know that some of your coaches are missing some stuff, uh, get in touch with us, um, we can, you know, walk you through it, and, and make sure that you guys have everything uh, everything completed, and, and by the way, once you, once you get it done, then uh, then you're good for, you know, you're good for next year. Um, cuz these um, cuz these modules are a good ones you, once you complete them. Uh, next slide there for you, Calvin.
That is, um, so up next, we got our NCCP update about our coaching workshops, so I've gotten a couple of emails from coaches asking about when are we gonna run these workshops again. Um, so we actually ran two of them, uh, VC did, and we ran, and we hosted them for them um, successfully uh, online, and we trained twenty-two coaches uh, in September and December. Um, one of the unexpected benefits of running these workshops is that uh, we were able to reach coaches all over the province since they were completely online. Uh, we had coaches from the GTA, so Toronto, York region, Saugadurham. Um, but within the two workshops, we were also able to reach coaches in North Bay, Windsor, Ottawa, Kingston, all at the same time, and we wouldn't have been able to do this before. Um, VC is now looking to make their final tweaks and adjustments, uh, and once those are complete, they will be looking to train our learning facilitators in the province and across the country. Uh, and then hopefully we'll be able to roll down, roll out full course shortly to everyone more, uh, and make it more available. And then just my last slide, uh, we also wanted to let everyone know that we were working on running the advanced development indoor and beach workshops. Um, unfortunately, these ones can't be brought online entirely, and there will always be an in-person uh, component to it. Uh, however, we have contacted our LS um, to see what kind of hybrid options there are for delivering maybe the online theory portion now, and then doing in-person later or outdoors in the spring when things allow. Uh, and we're also targeting the month of May for our beach workshops, if anyone's interested in that. Uh, so if you or anyone wants to take these workshops, uh, keep an eye on the website in the next couple of months uh, for any opportunities that become available.
Yeah, thanks, Calvin. Yeah, and sweets, um, yeah, so we're just, well, we, and also Volleyball Canada, we're all trying to do our best here to uh, to, to bring that NCCP training to, to you guys. Um, normally, we would train every year, you know, hundreds of people, and uh, it's only been twenty-two this year, so uh, we know that we, you know, we know that there are a lot of coaches out there wanting to take these courses, and as soon as, as we can, we will be um, you know, delivering them in, in safe ways. So that's uh, that's it for the information that we had to share. Um, I'm gonna go to, um, oops, did I just stop the sharing now? I believe I did, uh, we'll just go to the chat now, uh, see if there are any questions. Uh, also, you know, don't hesitate, there's only a handful of us here on this call, so if you wanna just unmute yourself and ask a question, uh, go ahead. I don't see any in the chat, so. That's what happened when we're so clear with our information, you know?
LP, we uh, one question for you.
Yeah, for sure.
Um, our club, we have a few coaches who've done most of the modules for their level one, or in my case, level two, but then there's that final evaluation that needs to be uh, completed. The, so just um, if, I'm not sure, is there a, a time deadline or anything like that? Cuz we've had some coaches who've completed, but now with COVID, you know?
Yeah.
Everything delayed, so.
Yeah, 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 no, there's a, it's a great question, and there's no, there's no delay, uh, especially as of right now, just like unlimited delay. But uh, so no, like, once you've done your courses, courses and you're trained, uh, there's no prescribed time um, within which you need to do your evaluation. That being said, once you start your evaluation process, you usually have a three-month period to complete it. And so that's in place so that uh, we avoid coaches dragging on and not completing their portfolio, and and that's kind of like creating a bottleneck now because our evaluators can't take more people because, you know, they need to finish this one evaluation, so uh, so normally, yes, when you register, you'd have three months. Now, the people who registered, you know, in January of last year for their evaluation, in February of last year, they haven't completed their evaluation, everything kinda stopped in March. So, you know, we're still kind of waiting with these people, um, for the most part, um, for their situation to allow them to go back to the gym and be able to finish. Some people have been fortunate, they've been able to finish in the last, you know, few months when uh, when they were able to be in the gym. Uh, but for the most part, we still have a backlog now. Um, so I, what I would say is, if you do have coaches who are interested in, in, in finishing their evaluation, as soon as um, as they are allowed to go back in the gym, even in a red zone where they're only training with six or eight athletes, um, that's good enough to get started. You know, hopefully, when we do go back to a red zone, it means that the next step is orange, and then yellow, right? It's like, it gets better, uh, so let's, let's just assume that, and so if they wanna start, that'd be perfect. And, and, and we're, we're gonna be very, very understanding, and, and we are right now, being very understanding with the people um, that, who are kind of in the middle, and we forgot the, the notion of a three-month period right now, and we just, we just work with coaches, so. Um, yeah, as soon as you get back into the gym, let us know.
I'll just add that uh, we have, so this past fall, we had coaches that did um, online evaluations, and even before the pandemic, we did that for coaches that were living in uh, remote communities. Um, so even if you are coaching and you need someone to evaluate you, if you can set up a camera, record it, we have guidelines to help you through that, uh, we can set you up with an evaluator, and they can help you debrief and go through your practice and your observation, all online, email, Zoom calls, uh, it's not gonna have to be in person.
How's everybody doing? Thumbs up? Good, good to hear. We're doing good too. We're gonna make it through, so um, thank you for uh, for being here tonight, guys, uh, as, as always. Um, please feel free to contact us for, if you have any questions. This uh, was recorded, so we will be posting the, the link to the recording online if for some reason you'd be interested in rewatching this. Um, and uh, but uh, yeah, so, that's it. Have a good rest of the evening, guys, and see you in the gym as soon as possible.
Thank you. Hey, everyone.
Hi.